Good noon, this is the regular meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council, October 22, 2024. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly, Councilmember Harmon, here. Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Present.
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Mayor Perotam Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Here.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez.
Here.
And Mayor Rouse.
Here. And we have a ceremonial item to read.
And that is Item One, National Arts and Humanities Month.
National Arts and Humanities Month, October 2024. Whereas October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by the White House and Congress since 1993, and whereas arts and culture are fundamental to building local identity, community pride, celebrating our diverse heritage and shared humanity, and boosting economic vitality, and whereas the city of Santa Barbara is distinguished by its longstanding commitment and to investment in our thriving, dynamic, and inclusive arts and culture ecosystem, and whereas this year we celebrate the significant milestone anniversaries of silverware cultural arts funding recipients such as the Community Arts Workshop, 10 years, Santa Barbara Maritime Museum and Drama Dogs Theater Company, 25 years, Opera Santa Barbara and State Street Ballet, 30 years, Center Stage Theater and the Museum of Contemporary Arts, 35 years, Santa Barbara International Film Festival, 40 years, Community Arts Association, 50 years, UCSB Arts and Lectures, 65 years, and their Granada and Lobero Theaters, 100 years each. Now therefore, I, Randy Rouse, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as National Arts and Humanities Month in Santa Barbara, and encourage all residents to take advantage of our vibrant local arts and opportunities. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse, and members of council. We are incredibly grateful for your commitment to arts and culture for everyone. The city's support has made Santa Barbara such a vibrant place to live, work, and visit, and I think it's also demonstrated by the remarkable impact and longevity of the arts and culture nonprofits that we have here. Joining us today are representatives from the Granada Theater, State Street Ballet, Center Stage Theater, Maritime Museum, CAH, Opera Santa Barbara, and the Lobero Theater. And the Lobero Organization is not only celebrating its centennial, but the landmark venue just turned 150. David Asbell, Executive Director of the Lobero, and a deeply respected community leader, is your official proclamation recipient. You may have heard, but after almost three decades in the role, he is stepping down for some much deserved piece. And during his tenure, he really doubled down on community access and outreach, established Jazz at the Lobero and the Lobero Live Program, and helped to lead a capital campaign and raised over $10 million to upgrade the facility so that it can continue to serve generations to come.
Well, thank you all for that. It has been a momentous 28 years, that's for sure, not only in my life, but for the Lobero Theater in Santa Barbara. It's all due to the great staff that's here today, most of them are here today. We feel like we've accomplished a lot, and we're very pleased with that, but it's nice to know that the future is in great hands, and it's going to be another great 100 years. So, thank you. All right, very good. Madam Administrator, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor Rouse, for Item Six on the consent for the hearing for 17 to 21 West Montecito, both parties have agreed to change the appeal date to December 10 from the January 14 date.
Okay. And Madam Attorney, do we need to make a motion to that regard?
No, you don't, but I'd just like to add that the site visit, Item B on that will be December 9 instead of January 13 as well.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move to the consent calendar. I believe you have some items to read, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Item Two, Proposed Changes to the Library Department Fiscal Year 2025 Fees and Fines Schedule Resolution. Recommendation of the Council be adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara directing the city clerk to update Resolution Number 24068 adopted on June 11, 2024, which became effective on July 1, 2024, or as provided therein, and amend the City of Santa Barbara schedule of penalties, fees, and service charges. And Item Three, Santa Barbara Municipal Airport Tax Airways, DFB1, A1, and A2, and Terminal Apron Pavement Repair Project Resolution Agreement, Recommendation that Council C adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Resolution Number 24066, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2025 to appropriate funds for the Santa Barbara Municipal Airport Tax Airways, DFB1, A1, and A2, and Terminal Apron Pavement Repair Project. And that's all the consent items to read, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. Are there any items that need to be pulled by anybody on the council on consent? Is anyone online wishing to pull an item on consent?
No, Mr. Mayor, no hands raised.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain an order.
I'll move consent with the change on Item Six.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Gutierrez. Okay, may we have the vote, please? First by Jordan, second by Oscar Gutierrez.
Yes, that is a motion for the entirety of the consent calendar by Mayor Perotam Jordan, seconded by Councilmember.
With the noted changes, right?
Oscar Gutierrez with the changes to Item Six as detailed. Please go ahead and vote.
As unanimous, we thank you very much.
And Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez, what is your vote on? Yes. Very good. And that's unanimous.
Can I get resolved?
No, that's attendance vote or the vote? That should be the vote, maybe let's do a roll call.
Okay.
But we'll do a really quick roll call just to make sure. So this is on the motion as described. A moment ago, Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Mayor Perotam Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez.
Yes.
And Mayor Rouse.
Aye. All right, very good. That passed unanimously, thank you. And with that, we'll take a report from the ordinance committee. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, we launched the discussion and pathway to council for the objective design and development standards. Heard public comment. As you know, the document itself is about the size of a healthy phone book, 400 pages, so we have continued our discussion and review of that with staff until December 3, and then it will work its way up to council.
All right, very good, thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to general public comment for three minutes at the podium for an item that is not on today's agenda but within the purview of this body. And we'll start out with Michael Baker.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Michael Baker, CEO, United Boys and Girls Clubs. I just wanted to give you an update on a couple of things. One, membership at the club is just booming. We're very excited that we're about 440 members right now, averaging a little over 110 kids a day. 90% of those children qualify for the free reduced lunch program at schools, and we're serving those kids every single night, dinner. Again, that's tremendous, tremendous output by our kitchen staff because they're not only preparing the meals for the kids here at our Santa Barbara Club, but every single meal that we're providing throughout the county, Long Polk, Buellton, Solvang, Carpenteria, Galita, they're being produced here at our local club, at the West Side Club, and that's being, because of the wonderful support of Deckers, who purchased a vehicle for us to be able to transport that food all over the county. So really, Deckers does deliver, so I'm going to say that. I wanted to also let you know that we're really excited for, and it should be on your calendars hopefully, because you'll be here. It's December 10 is our gold card ceremony. That's a day that I look forward to at every one of our city councils, and we're really excited, this is going to be a banner year. It looks like we're going to break all records as it pertains to the Santa Barbara Club having as many members achieve the gold card status, which is attending 105 days, and I will remind everybody what that means. We know from national studies in Boys and Girls Clubs, and there's over 5,000 clubs throughout the country, 1,500 different organizations, but 5,000 Boys and Girls Clubs serve about 5 million children every single day. We know from the studies of decades of data that the magic number is 105 days. If we can get a child to attend a Boys and Girls Club 105 days in the same calendar year, they're twice as likely to graduate high school in time and twice as likely to lead a healthy lifestyle. So we've totally embraced that at the United Boys and Girls Clubs, and what we've done is we created what we call Club 105. And when they reach the halfway point of 105, 52 days, I know it's 52.5, Mayor Rouse, I know it's 52.5, but anyways, when they do get to the halfway point, they receive their silver card for participation in the clubs, and they get special privileges with that. And then when they get to 105 days, they get their gold card. That's the standard that we're looking for. And this was the first city council that actually recognized the children for doing that here at the city council. So we're really excited about that, and it's a big day, not only for the kids but for their parents. So again, thank you for your continued support in supporting United Boys and Girls Clubs.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. And if you could remind Holly, our executive assistant, and we'll make sure we get those on our calendars.
You got it.
Thank you. Next speaker is Clint Orr.
Mayor Rouse, council members, Clint Orr here, and I just would like to talk about a few things. Coast Village, you know, sometime we got to talk about this. You guys annex that, and you take the taxes out, and it looks like a third world country. You don't maintain the median, it's supposed to have grass, it's got water there. You don't maintain the lights on the Coast Village sign. Those five lights have been dead for 12 years. You guys out of water and electricity? Aren't you supposed to maintain that place? Isn't that, you guys annex that and take the taxes out, and you don't maintain it? And that disturbs me. You need to go out there and put grass in there, there's sprinklers every 10 feet. We're not broke, we can put grass in there, it should look like a country club, like it was designed in the first place. And you don't water the darn bird of paradise, it never has any blooms because it don't get no water. I mean, nobody thought of that, huh? We're not out of water, we got the diesel plant, the reclaimation plant, the reservoirs are full. So don't blame it on water, okay? Blame it on yourselves not taking care of business to maintain Coast Village Road. I mean, that's Santa Barbara, isn't it? 93108? Well, then maybe just go over there and like fix the place. Why is that my responsibility? You know, they go out there and they just weed whack it, it's just dirt. There's nothing there but dirt in the center. It's been that way for, well, 12 years that I've been in Montecito. So I say you should maintain Coast Village Road. Fix the lights on the Coast Village thing? I complained to two other mayors about this, and nothing's been done. Our air problems are really, really bad. If you try to walk the streets, everybody's got two leaf blowers instead of one. It's gotten really bad. I know you guys maybe just cut ribbons and stuff, but go walk your dog in the morning and see if you can do it on a USA sidewalk, because you can't. Yeah, you guys laugh at me, but you really can't. So it's time for us to go to no leaf blowers within 100 feet of a sidewalk. Give us a break. Let your grandmother walk the church. Let your kids and grandkids walk your dog. So we should have no leaf blowers within 100 feet of a sidewalk. Now, real quick, the vote? Harris versus Trump, I'm not really excited about that. I think that the Supreme Court should say that we're going to have a fair election, because we don't. We talk about democracy all over the world, and we've appointed Trump, and then Harris didn't even get a vote. She was appointed president, possibly elect. So let's have a fair election. Probably the Supreme Court's got to do it. Republican, Democrat, independent, whoever gets the most votes. Thank you. Democracy.
Next speakers are Cass Enzberg and Lydia Rao. Are they, are you, have a duet here, is it? So you won't be singing?
No.
Okay.
Mayor Rouse and City Council, a year has passed, and here we are again with the Kids to Architecture Calendar for 2025. And I'm here with Lydia Rao, who is our new Executive Director for the Architectural Foundation of Santa Barbara, and we just thought you would enjoy seeing. Here are 35 years of Kids to Architecture Calendars. Here's all of them. And we're, we, this is this year, so here's your gifts for this year. And we were at the mission in the spring, and we had, I think, 50, 50 children and their families came, and all of them are included in here. They range from the ages of three to 15, and did amazing, beautiful drawings of the mission. So I'm going to let Lydia say a few words, but we're just delighted to be here, and thank you for your support, and hopefully this spring, maybe you'll be able to show up and sketch with us when we figure out where we're going to be this year. Lydia?
Just wanted to touch on some of the other educational programs. The Architectural Foundation of Santa Barbara offers to students in Santa Barbara County. This upcoming March, we're going to have our high school design competition, which gives local high school students in both the North County and the South County the opportunity to design a building based off of a central prompt that they're all given, which are then reviewed by a jury, and we have our finalists selected, and they get to present their project. And at the end of the school year, we also have our scholarship reception, in which we select several exemplary architecture and design students, and give them a scholarship at the end of the year to support and promote the architecture and design in our community. And we also offer programs to the public, including our walking tours, which actually meet right outside City Hall every Saturday, and walk around town and review the architecture of historic buildings. And we also have our art gallery, which is located at the historic Atchison House, our offices at Victorian Garden Street, and that promotes local artists in the community, and gives them a chance to show their art and the public a chance to view it. And I just wanted to say, our next gallery opening is going to be Sunday, November 10, from 1 to 3, and it's actually going to feature the original drawings of our KDA artists that are featured in this upcoming year's calendar, and we hope you can all make it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For Art Month, right?
Perfect, thank you. Next speaker is Steve Johnson.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The palm trees on West Coated Street got trimmed today. Thank you very much to council members and all city staff that made that happen. I have appealed hotel projects at two locations in the city, each involving subgrade parking. I recently filed a public records request and thereby obtained emails. Please see my written comments for details. Here's what I learned. Someone hired a lobbyist.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if these comments pertain to the subject of your appeal, then the comment should be made during those appeal hearings.
They are general advice.
The 101 Garden Street Appeal Public Hearing has been closed.
I haven't named that location, and these are general comments applicable to anyone proposing subgrade parking.
Okay, if they're general and don't pertain to either of those addresses, then you can continue.
Can you please proceed?
But feel free to interrupt me if you feel my comments are not appropriate.
We will.
I think the city and the public especially should be aware of this. Certainly was a shock to me. Someone hired a lobbyist to contact our local U.S. representative to reach out to FEMA to request an expedited review of a hotel project. The lobbyist described the effort in an email sent to many senior officials. Some of them replied to the lobbyist. It is unsettling to learn that city officials assist an applicant in a case without notifying the public or the appellant. Another point, in late July, staff supplied information received from FEMA to an applicant. I was left in the dark. Third point, staff made a critically important.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I do think that these comments pertain to a particular project. Thank you.
But your legal opinion is worth more than mine, I believe. I'll try again next week, but I do have one new point of information not related to a specific.
Yeah, cannot be related to a specific project.
It's not related, it's related to any subgrade project. A newly discovered fact, I'm not an expert, but I read, and I have learned, and I'll document that next week, ACE 24 allows no subgrade parking whatsoever in areas subject to flash flooding. I don't believe anybody here or on the city staff is aware of that fact, but not allowed near areas subject to flash flooding. You'll recall, we had some flash flooding in 2018, resulted in 23 deaths. Somebody needs to look into that. Thank you for your time.
All right, are there any public comments online, Madam Clerk?
No hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. And with that, we will close public comment, and we'll move on to council member committee assignment reports. Does anybody have a report? Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. See, attended our Creeks Committee meeting, they had their capital improvement program workshop, and they named Aaron Markey as a new Creeks manager, and Jill Murray is the Stormwater Management and Water Quality Manager. So some things of interest to council, I think, would be that they're looking at in the future off-site stormwater compliance downtown in the redevelopment of State Street, so that should be a long order project. And then also of interest, particular interest is Sycamore Creek Watershed, looking at increasing capacity and restoration of different creeks there. Also attended Water Commission, let's see, I'm not sure, there was a wastewater system annual report. There's so much that goes into that wastewater system, it's a great meeting and presentation to look at if you're interested in that. And then also, I just wanted to mention that next week on Tuesday, I'll be sorry to miss the city council meeting because I'll be in Toba City, Japan, as part of the delegation celebrating our sister city's 70th anniversary.
Thank you. Any further council member committee reassignment reports? Okay, with that, we will move on to our administrative calendar. Madam Clerk, if you have items to read.
Item Seven, Fiscal Years 2026 and 2027, Public Service Human Services Grant Funding. In fiscal year 2026, Community Development Block Grant Funding Process Priorities and Criteria.
Ms. Doubles.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse and City Council members. My name is Laura Doubles, I'm the Housing and Human Services Manager for the city, and with me here today is Ms. Lindsay Drews Thompson, and she's our Community Development Program Specialist. Thank you for having us here today to present to you the Community Development Block Grant and Human Services Funding Process Priorities and Criteria for the upcoming fiscal years of 2026 and 2027. The City of Santa Barbara is considered an entitlement jurisdiction by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and every year, that means that we receive an allocation of Community Development Block Grant Funds, which are considered CDBG, I'm sure you've probably heard that acronym many times. And so council takes an annual action to authorize us to solicit for the funding proposals for that funding, as well as approves the process, criteria, and priorities for it. They also allocate a certain amount of human services funding that comes from the city's general fund, and it actually supplements the 15% that we're able to use from the CDBG funding for human services to help to support further agencies and provide more services in our community. There are two funding sources. The CDBG is an annual process. HUD requires us to submit an annual action plan that shows exactly what activities we plan to use that funding on, and those activities must be identified annually in accordance with the city's adopted Citizen Participation Plan. The other source is our human public service grant funds. And two years ago, in October, the council directed staff to transition that process to a two-year cycle instead of an annual. HUD makes it clear that the national CDBG objectives are that the funding primarily benefit low and moderate income persons, eliminate or prevent slums or blight, or meet other urgent local community development needs. And how do we determine those needs? Well, we're mandated for every five years to submit a consolidated plan that basically shows our priorities and goals. So for the 2020 and 2024 plan, you'll see the priorities and goals listed here on the slide. We are currently in the process of creating our 2025-2029 plan with a consultant we've hired. But for this cycle coming up, we are going to go ahead and continue with these priorities and goals, because as you can see, they still need to be addressed, they haven't been taken care of, which is somewhat unfortunate, but we are going to be putting our money towards homeless assistance, public facilities and infrastructure, decent housing availability, and expanding economic development for either self-employed or small businesses. On September 24, the Community Development and Human Services Committee, or CDHSC, which the council appoints, held a public hearing to assess the current, the community survey that we actually sent out to the community back in August. We kept it open for about a month, and so we were able to collect the needs and priorities and goals that our community saw that the funding should be put towards for this upcoming fiscal year 2026 cycle. And through that, we found that the funding priorities really did not change. We have the same priorities here listed on the screen, and staff does not have any recommendations to change these priorities then. This slide shows a bar chart of our actual entitlements that we have received in a historical person. those are usually come to us in probably the end of spring or beginning of summer. So in order to start this process, we go with a status quo of what we've, what we had for this past year. So 846,418 was our actual allocation. And so we're estimating that for the fiscal year 2026. And our CDHSC, or the committee, their role in this process is to evaluate the applications and interview the applicants. They recommend the grant awards to the council. And most of the time, we come in March of each year. So we'll be coming in March of 2025 with those recommendations. They monitor our grantees and they conduct site visits, which we've gotten a lot of feedback that that's very helpful to them in knowing what the agencies do and the good services that they provide our community. And then they provide the input to the council on the needs that they see the community has. Currently, we have seven members seated on our committee. There is capacity for 13 members. So if you know of anybody who's interested in serving on our committee, please send them their, our way. These committee members represent a broad range of community interests. And some are from our low and moderate income neighborhoods. In order to be eligible to apply for this grant funding, the services must benefit low or moderate income residents. The applicant must be a nonprofit or basically 501(c)(3) status with the IRS. Must be a local unit of government or a for-profit entity providing services to microenterprises. They must serve specific social and physical needs. And they must present measurable outcomes to us in, so that we can determine the results that the services have provided. They also must propose a marketing strategy that specifically reaches out to our ethnic communities and provide us with the ability to know how they're going to reach everybody so that we definitely make sure that everybody knows of their services that they provide. They also have to show support from intended clients, as well as identify funding sources from both public and private entities. They have to demonstrate financial stability and also that their administrative costs are reasonable. They have to provide a direct benefit to our city of Santa Barbara residents and identify the service areas, as well as paying the required local minimum wage to their staff that is supported by the funds. They are evaluated in their performance, their board engagement, program impact, their measurable outcomes and how the results have been coming in, the need for their services in the community, their financial sustainability. And for capital projects, there, there's some additional criteria in that they need to give us a project description. And that must meet state and federal and local laws. The need for that capital project and the estimated costs, and if they are reasonable. Our staff really makes a lot of efforts to do a lot of outreach. We send notices to our mailing list with our service providers and interested applicants. We usually send as well to our previous three years' worth of applicants. We publish an ad in The Voice. We issue a press release in English and Spanish to local media, as well as publishing notices on our city website news section, social media sites, the City News and Brief newsletter. And we also post out on the Santa Barbara Nonprofit Resource Network website, which is a countywide resource hub for the nonprofit community. So we really do get that message out there. This is a tentative funding schedule. Of note, on the 14th of November, we are having a mandatory workshop. Applicants must attend that workshop to be eligible to apply. Two days prior to that, we are going to make the application available online. So we welcome any questions, if anybody may have that at the workshop. And then the application deadline is on December 12th at 4:00 p.m. During the months of January through February, our committee will review all the applications and conduct interviews. And then in March, we usually have the committee has their recommendations. And we will, as staff, bring them to the council for approval. So on these next two slides is our staff recommendation today. I won't read it word for word, but I'll have it up here. And that presents, or that is our presentation. I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions for staff? Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. If you could pull up Slide 3. It mentions there that back in 2022, the council changed to a biennial award. Could you, it was in the staff report, but could you just say how that's been going? Is it something that they've supported, the applicants? What's been the feedback of that change that came to council, like council initiated two years ago?
Thank you, Mayor Rouse and Councilmember Friedman. Actually, we've had a lot of positive feedback from that change. And a lot of them have let us know that it does help their staffing as well, to know that they have two years' worth of funding for their staff instead of just the one.
Perfect. And then if you could pull up Slide 10. This may be a question for the city attorney. It says there's a 13-member board with only seven members. And then when I look at the applicants for the next round of commissions, there's only a few that have applied. One's an incumbent, two are for the same position. And is this, one, is this a Brown Act committee? And then, two, what happens? Because right now, it's at the minimum of seven out of 13. What would happen if they only had six members that could make a meeting? Or we got into a case where there's only six people have applied and we don't have seven or more members?
Through the mayor, Councilmember Friedman. So I do believe that it's a Brown Act committee. So, and I believe your question first is if we didn't have a quorum, what would, what would happen?
Correct, yeah.
So obviously, if there was no quorum, they wouldn't be able to meet. There is the, the rule of necessity, which provides exceptions in limited circumstances where a board could meet when it didn't have a quorum, if, if there was a requirement for another board member to fill in or for one of those board members, but if there was a necessity that an action be taken. But that's only applies in the situation where there's a conflict. So that exception doesn't apply. So if there wasn't a quorum because of a lack of members, then they just wouldn't be able to meet. I think that situation has arisen in other boards that we have where we've had to change the rules in order to accommodate the situation where we just simply haven't been able to appoint enough members. So, you know, potentially, we need to come back and look at changing the. I think there's bylaws for this particular board that govern the membership. So perhaps that may be something that, that Ms. Doubles wants to look at, is changing the bylaws to change the membership if they're having difficulty filling the board spots.
And Ms. Connect, I can speak to that. And Councilmember Friedman. So a few years back, we did change our bylaws. And within this board, we need to have, of those appointed, we, it's okay if we go to six or if we go to five. We don't need to have a quorum of that 13. And so if we drop beneath that seven-member threshold, we would still be able to meet so long as we have a quorum within that seven. And so we're able to meet if four of our members appear.
So you're able to meet if there's four, but are you able to make decisions? Because the Brown, I'm trying to understand your, Brown Act is state, and then we have our local, but there are certain parameters that we have to follow the state law. So in a case where we're looking at, you know, federal dollars or state from the CDBG on this committee, how does that work with, if we only had, say, four members? And you have a 13-member committee, does that put those funds at risk? Or do we have an exception? I'm just concerned about it because it's always been one that's right on the cusp.
Yeah, Councilmember, I would need to look at those bylaws in order for me to make a determination whether or not that meets Brown Act requirements. It could be that, you know, a quorum of the board is determined to be that fewer number. So those, you know, it just depends upon how the, the board is constituted. So we would need to review that in order to, to make that determination.
So I just noticed that during the slide.
And we should probably do that.
I just noticed that when that slide came up. And then because we're doing vacancies right now, or interviews, that came to my mind. So I'll reserve my comments on that for the comments section. But thank you.
Thank you. While you're on the subject of, is it possible to do? We've done other situations before where we had to do an emergency or a special recruitment. Is that something that's within the realm of possibility for this particular committee?
We could, we could definitely do that if needed.
Okay, just, I thought I'd just throw that out there. Okay, very good. Ms. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On that note, Ms. Connect, about special recruitment. I just saw that there for membership, there is a vacant for the Latino community and African-American community. Those are the two positions that are vacant?
Councilmember Gutierrez, could we have that conversation when we get to the appointments?
Perfect, perfect.
Because I don't think that's part of this conversation. For this agenda item in particular?
Okay, thank you. I think this next question is actually from Ms. Connect as well. For the priorities for this block grant, I know we used to have a priority for at-risk youth a while back. And I was just wondering if this is the time to maybe make a suggestions to put a priority for like child development, some, again, like adding that children category in there? Like funding either child development or something that has a priority with like youth engagement? Yeah. Can staff speak?
I'm going to defer that to staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor Rouse and Councilwoman Alejandra Gutierrez. And so to clarify, we do have, we have our consolidated priorities. We also have our human services priorities. And the human services priorities are discretionary. Upon meeting with our committee back in September, they decided to continue with our current human services priorities, which are, the first priority is programs that help meet basic human needs, specifically food, shelter, and medical needs, both physical and mental. And then the second priority is proposals that reduce that impact of violence, including and/or, excuse me, including the prevention of gun violence and suicide and/or are preventative in nature and/or promote the highest degree of functioning that individual is capable of achieving. And so that includes the youth programs, that includes the prevention programs. And then also includes programs that address certain violence against women or violence against children programs, both in prevention and then also in response.
Thank you. And also, on your timeline, you mentioned that applicants have to assist, attend a workshop. And can you tell me where the location for the workshop is?
Absolutely. Honorable Mayor Rouse and Councilwoman Gutierrez, that workshop will be held at 630 Garden Street at the Community Development Department in the David Gettner Public Meeting Room.
And it is mandatory, right, for the applicants? Thank you.
Very good. Actually, Madam Clerk, I have a blank space where it says next speaker. Does anybody, is anybody trying to speak that punched in? So you're the blank space. The mystery speaker is here, Ms. Sneddon.
I am the blank space. Okay. So I have a couple of questions. Does the applicant have to have a physical location if they're providing services in, say, pop-up locations or in parks or through the library? Do they have to have a physical entity?
Honorable Mayor Rouse and Councilwoman Sneddon, they do not need to have a physical location. So examples of this would be last year, we funded We Care and their child, their work with daycare centers to boost their economic, excuse me, their capacity and so, and grow our economic development here. And then another example would be Showers of Blessing. While they have, I believe their office is based in the city of Santa Barbara, they are mobile in nature.
That's great. Thank you. And then just along the lines with Councilmember Alejandra Gutierrez, I had already had this question down that, and I know in the past, we talked about prioritizing programs within those priorities, but then having prioritization for programs with either young children or single-parent families or, so, you know, if there was a priority for homeless services, that it would be if, if those were services and if the applicants were particularly catering to young children. Is that something that, I know we talked about in the past, and I was just wondering if that's part of it at all, or if it's in those same priorities that you listed already?
Happy to, happy to respond to that question, Honorable Mayor Rouse and Councilwoman Sneddon. They are not currently in those priorities. The priorities are fairly vague, or excuse me, fairly broad. And as, upon reviewing all of the grant applicants that we do receive, a lot of them serve a very unique clientele. And so if, if council saw it necessary to really focus your discretionary funds on serving women and children within a specific sector, that would be your discretion. But it's within the priorities currently. They're broad, fairly broad.
Thank you. And that reminds me, you saying that unique clientele, a part of the priority is that it might be filling the gap of a need that isn't being met elsewhere? Is that, is that part of the criteria?
It is not currently the part of the criteria. However, as a staff member who works closely with all of these agencies, most of them do serve a unique clientele.
Okay, thank you. And then just one last question. Possibly publishing an ad in The Independent or in something that might be more widely read? I'm just wondering, yes, if that's possible.
That is absolutely possible. Yes, we can definitely do that. The city generally does The Voice. However, we can definitely do The Voice and The Independent. That's not a problem.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Well, given the status of our machinery here today, I'm going to ask if anybody else has a comment they'd like to register or a question. Are there, okay, very good. Do we have public speakers to this? I have no speaker slips. Do you have anyone in line?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have. Let's see, now, two hands raised, Andrea Slaby and Elizabeth Adams.
Very good, thank you.
So Andrea Slaby, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you all. I want to give a big round of applause and gratitude to the city council and the mayor, as well as Lindsay and Laura for this wonderful grant opportunity for the Health and Human Services, Public Services. My name's Andrea Slaby, and I am the Chief Operating Officer for Organic Soup Kitchen. And we deliver to over 800-plus low-income clients weekly, all the way from Carpentaria to Santa Maria. And we are extremely grateful for the two-year grant process that you all did approve of two years ago in 2022. And as it helps us plan for the fun, the funding of our staff and the funding of the organization as a whole, we have just been so grateful. And we hope to continue this wonderful partnership with the city and the public service and Health and Human Services. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Elizabeth Adams.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Elizabeth Adams. Elizabeth Adams, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Elizabeth Adams. I'm the Regional Director over here at Path Santa Barbara. And ditto to everything that was just said. Just wanted to take this opportunity to really say thank you so much for this grant opportunity, as well as the two-year funding cycle. Anytime we can have consistent, reliable funding, it takes such a burden off of trying to frantically figure out where those dollars are going to come from near two years. So really appreciate that two-year cycle. And the CDBG grants, these funding opportunities have just been so beneficial to Path and our programs. We've been able to partially fund our street outreach program, having people out there, having conversations with people experiencing homelessness on the streets and getting them connected, getting them inside has, has been incredible benefit, not only to Path, but as well as to the community. It's also helped us really do some facility improvements with installing new lighting, getting some new painting, and really trying to create a calming, healing environment for folks experiencing homelessness who are participating in our interim housing program. And all of this, we wouldn't be able to do without this funding opportunity. So thank you again, and we look forward to continuing this partnership.
Thank you. Are there further speakers online?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two further speakers, Hannah Rickman and Alejandra Enciso. Hannah Rickman, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and esteemed City Councilmembers. My name is Hannah Rickman, and I am the Grants Coordinator for the Food Bank of Santa Barbara County. And I also just want to reiterate what everybody is saying, that we are so grateful for this funding opportunity and for the support of the staff, Lindsay and Laura. We are just so grateful to have their expertise and guidance going forward. This two-year application process has also been really helpful, and we are really grateful to have that. And the support has been so helpful in reaching, we had, has been a continued elevated need we have seen in our community. From 2019 to 2022, children, food insecurity rate in Santa Barbara County went up by 35%. And according to the United Ways of California's Real Cost Measure Analysis, 71% of households in our county with small children struggle financially. And this is a rate much greater than other households. Additionally, eight in 10 female heads of household are below the real cost measure for meeting their basic needs. And in the quarter one of fiscal '25, fiscal year '25 alone, they accounted for 25% of the residents we served in the city of Santa Barbara. So this funding is really, really helpful in ensuring we're able to get culturally important, nutrient-dense food that prioritizes fresh produce, and ensuring we are establishing healthy relationships with food for our youth and working across the lifespan of all ages. So thank you so much for this opportunity, and we really appreciate your support.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Final speaker is Alejandra Enciso. Alejandra Enciso, please go ahead.
Hi, everyone. This, my name is Alejandra Enciso, and I'm the 2011 Program Manager for Communeify and 2011 Santa Barbara County. And I just want to say thank you again to the City Councilmembers and the mayor for supporting such a beautiful project. And we were able to help so many folks in Santa Barbara, in Santa Barbara County, and specifically in the city of Santa Barbara. And we're excited to, to help our community again. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, very good. And with that, we'll bring it back to council. I'd like to have my colleagues be mindful of the fact that we do have applicant interviews starting at three. So please go ahead and let me know if you'd like to make comments. Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'm, I'm supportive of, appreciate staff and all the work that you do, and all of our committee members. And I'm supportive of the priorities that we have rolling those over. I think they've, they demonstrated the need then, and they demonstrate, demonstrate the need now, especially housing and the public health and safety for those most at risk. The other issue is if we could look into the issue of the Brown Act. When I looked at today's, there's four applicants. One is already on there. There's one that's an individual position, and then two more are for a position where there's only one slot available. So out of the four, only two, out of the four, would only add two more to the committee. And this has, to the best of my recollection, been one that's been tough to recruit for, for whatever reason. Sometimes it's because specific, there are specific categories, so the pool is limited. And so I just want to be sure that we're taking every precaution necessary in putting in our system so that we don't run into any potential quorum or Brown Act issues, since it's such an important committee. So I'd like to just have us look at that and report back to council with what you discovered. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rousen. I just also support the priorities and especially the work of the committee. I think they make so many difficult decisions with so many deserving and really impactful programs that we'll be applying. So just in advance of all of their hard work, just want to thank you and thank the committee.
All right. Well, good job. Thanks very much. I would just like to say that, yes, along with my colleagues, we do appreciate the very difficult work that this committee does, but it is rewarding work. And so anybody that's out there as an applicant may want to consider this as an alternative committee if you don't get the committee you've first chosen, because we do need people, we need good people, and we, they, they do excellent work. So please consider it if you would. And if there are, let's see, we have a, let's pull the agenda back out here. We do have an action item, do we not? All right. I would entertain a motion.
I will move the motion.
Okay, moved by Alejandra Gutierrez, seconded by Oscar Gutierrez. May we have, should we try the machine again and give it a shot? What the hey? Does the information age, is it not?
Perfect. So this is a motion for Item 7, Recommended Actions by Councilmember Alejandra Gutierrez, seconded by Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez. Please go ahead and vote.
All right.
Let's do a, a quick roll call vote for the motion as just described. Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandra Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
And Mayor Rousen.
Hi. Okay, thank you. Passed unanimously. And with that, we will move on to the next item. If you could read that, please.
Certainly. Interviews for city advisory groups, Item 8.
All right, very good. So we have you listed by appointment. And so please come on up when your name is called. And if we have to move ahead because somebody's not quite here yet, we will, if you're here. So we'll start out with Mary McMahon. And this is for the Sister Cities Board.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Mary McMahon, and I've been a resident here in the county of Santa Barbara for over 34 years. I recently retired from 40 years of work at the University of California. Not all of that was in Santa Barbara. I've also worked at UCLA, UC Santa, Santa Cruz, worked for the Office of the President, and then culminated my work here at UC Santa Barbara. The majority of those 40 years of service were in international exchange and international relationships. And in these roles, I worked to establish relationships with entities overseas, usually universities. And we would promote student exchange, research, and faculty appointments as well. And I have worked with entities in all continents, with the exception of Europe. In response to the questions, are you willing and able to devote the time easily? Do I know what the work of the advisory group for which I'm applying? Not exactly, but I think that I've had extensive experience thus far in international relations. And the experience and skills that I bring are from my UC work in education abroad, faculty coordination, collaboration, and that type of thing. But I also was on three different Fulbright entities, where we were taken overseas to get to know the country. And that was measurably helpful for me to understand how to educate people about a different location, different way of doing things, a different approach. And I have a desire to serve. I feel that international understanding is key to our future, and so I'd like to do something to promote it. I've actually kind of watched the Sister Cities Board, and usually there's only, there's only one appointment that's outside of the city. And so that has been a limitation to my application. But with the post-pandemic and my free time, I would be welcome to serve.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there questions for Ms. McMahon?
Mr. Jordan. So you've watched it with your experience. If you had one city to pick, where would it be?
Well, in looking at this.
To add to it.
In the, in the cities that you have, I was just trying to think, what is it that they might be interested in? Is it comparable cities of size? Is it comparable geographic locations? Is it a reliance on tourism? And that, that I would need to learn from the board exactly what the objectives were. But I noticed that there's nothing in Africa, and there's nothing in Spain, if I believe.
Right.
And so some connections kind of come to me in terms of what the possibilities might be.
Super. Thanks so much.
All right. Any further questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Our next applicant is Lauren Anderson from the Architectural Board of Review. All right, we're two for two for so far.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. As mentioned, my name is Lauren Anderson, and I'm here to interview for the Architectural Board of Review. I am a licensed architect with 16 years of experience, mainly in residential architecture, including multifamily projects throughout California. I have presented various projects to boards in both the city and county, which has further broadened my perspective. For the past four years, I have served on this Architectural Board of Review, including the past year as Chair. This role has provided insights into the challenges and opportunities our city faces in planning and architecture. During my time on the ABR, we have evaluated a wide range of projects under the AUD program. A persistent challenge has been ensuring that the larger developments remain compatible with the neighborhood character in terms of size, mass, bulk, height, and scale. I believe it is essential to have a board with diverse qualifications and experiences, which has been evident in our discussions. This diversity fosters comprehensive approaches to our city's development, enabling us to align our conclusions with the established design guidelines. Working in the industry today gives me a relevant viewpoint that I believe is beneficial for the board. I prioritize collaboration and actively listen to all members, ensuring that we remain within our purview and keep a respectful dialogue. And it's been rewarding to see these projects come to life and contribute to our community's growth. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Ms. Anderson? Thank you very much. There's always a name like this. Kirsten, thank you for being here on your first name, because I'm going to let you tell me how that last name goes, please. And this is for the Community Events and Festivals Committee.
Correct. My name is Kirsten Kojol.
See, I'm really glad I didn't try that. Thank you.
You would have guessed it. I'm sure of it. I am here by recommendation of a good friend of mine who's already on the committee. We actually volunteer at a local nonprofit together, and she told me about the committee. I've lived in Santa Barbara since 97. I went to City College, went to UCSB. Then I was in the hospitality industry for a good 10 years and was involved in events, including the Film Festival, and helping coordinate those. I then moved into the nonprofit world myself, and I've been working at United Way of Santa Barbara County, as well as the American Heart Association. It'll be about 15 years soon of nonprofit work, mainly doing events, logistics, and coordinating, and permits, and all that fun stuff that goes into it. I'm currently on what we call the centralized support team of the American Heart Association. And I just found out yesterday that we have a leave of absence in Vegas, so I have to fly to Vegas and make an event happen real quick. So I'm very familiar with the ins and outs of events and logistics and what's, you know, feasible and what's not. So when she told me about this committee and encouraged me to get involved, and this is why I'm here.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for this applicant? Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you for your time.
Thomas Trappler from, this is for the Transportation and Circulation Committee.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Tom Trappler. Strangely enough, I also recently retired from the University of California after 40 years. So I'm not sure if there's a trend there. In my role there, I was Director of IT Strategic Sourcing for the UC System. So my responsibilities were to bring together diverse stakeholders from the 10 campuses, the five medical centers, around common objectives and goals, and lead them towards things like reducing risk, reducing costs to the UC System. It may sound kind of obvious that we would all work together, but it's a very distributed organization. So bringing everyone together was really important to show our kind of collective demand and leverage. And I'm really grateful to be living here in Santa Barbara. I'm looking to apply my skills and some of my newly found free time to contribute back to the community. I learned about some of the various committees on the website, and saw the Transportation and Circulation Committee had some need for members. And basically, I just want to apply my skills to contribute back to the community.
All right, very good. Thank you. Are there any questions for this applicant? Thank you for applying. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Margaret Seved, there she is. Come on up for Sister Cities Board.
Well, you're way ahead of schedule.
We are ahead of schedule, which is not usually how we roll. So I'm kind of excited about all this.
So yes, I am here to reapply, to remain on the Sister City Advisory Board. I have been on the, on the board for four years, but it seems like it's been longer. I am currently the Chair. I originally started as a representative for the Puerto Vallarta Sister Cities Board. I remain on the board, and I am currently the President of the Puerto Vallarta Board as well. I'm also a member of the Miraflores Group, Patras, just returned from that wonderful trip to Greece. And I think I'm way high in Japan. I don't know. But I really have found my calling since my retirement, working with the Sister Cities. And each of the Sister Cities has their own projects that they work towards, building a relationship between Santa Barbara and their sister city. And I look forward to continuing. I just recently, as, as the Chair, I was previously the, I think, the Assistant or Vice Chair when Pat Fallon left, and then I found myself as the Chair. But I believe I've done a pretty good job being the Chair. And we are resuming the Young Artists and Authors Showcase since the pandemic. And we also renewed the International Sister City Dinner that just happened this past October. So I think we'll get those under our belt and maybe look at doing some other combined joint effort types of programs. And so that's why I think I would like to remain on the board. And I don't really know anybody else that would want to be Chair. So thank you all.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Sevedra? I know Mr. Gutierrez and I have been pretty active with the board in the last year or so. And Ms. Sneddon's about to ready a dipper toe in the water going to Toba, going up. So.
Yeah.
It's, it's quite an active board and pretty impressive events that you, the one we just had the other day was pretty amazing. So.
It amazed me, too. Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Thank you very much. Yes, we are ahead of the game here. We'll go down and see if Robert Nielsen is, very good. This is Parks and Recreation.
Hello, council. I guess it's good that you guys gave out the 30 minutes ahead notice. So that worked out well. I've never applied to a board before. I've lived here my whole life. And as I've come into more adulthood and am trying to start a family, I wanted to give back, which I think is something that all you guys probably find in common. The Parks and Rec has played a big positive role in my life throughout the years. And that's the one I thought I could give back best to. When I found out that a lot of our boards have vacancies was what really spurred me to step up and try to fill those vacancies. boards have vacancies was what really spurred me to step up and try to fill those vacancies. So, there may be other qualified people. Choose whoever you think is best, but I hope that if there's a need, I can fill it. I spent my career in aerospace, doing environmental health and safety management, program management, a bunch of stuff that I think I can help give to the Parks and Rec team about how to make sure the maintenance goes well, and kind of the events and all the things that go on with the parks. I participate in the night moves, and Jay and his team that get a bunch of our community members out there is really inspiring. So, the, all the activity that goes on in our public spaces is just some of the best parts of my life. So, I hope to bring some community enthusiasm to that board if I can, and the Parks and Rec people have been a really great team to work with. I have been engaging with them on the Douglas Family Preserve activity that's been going on recently, and they're just great people to work with, so that was the right team I wanted to try to help out. Yeah, so I don't have the horticulture or parks background that other people might be bringing, but I think I'll bring a different flair to it. I, in the last couple of years, have been working for myself, so I have the time and flexibility to meet the commitment for this board. And I continue, I think I'll be able to maintain that for the full cycle. And what's, as I start to raise a family, I think the giving back into our town, the way that I want my family to grow up with it, is what sticks on my mind. So, happy to take any questions.
Very good. Are there questions for Mr. Nielsen?
Thank you.
And, Mr., well, I was just going to ask you, so, since you have a young family and whatnot, are you aware of the time commitments and the meetings and the schedules and all that?
I am, yeah.
So, that's not going to be a barrier for you to participate?
I don't believe so. Nope.
Because you guys have a lot of work on your docket coming up, and a lot of things come to fruition for Parks and Rec, which is great.
Yep.
But we're going to need some involved people on the board, so.
Yeah. And so, this year, as opposed to other years, where I was on someone else's schedule, I get to make my own schedule now, and I got a very supportive wife, so that's why I thought this was the right time to give it a go.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Take care.
Let's see, is Peter Smith here? Okay, we'll come back to Mr. Smith, because we are ahead of schedule on him. Jennifer Diaz. And Jennifer is applying for the Community Development and Human Services Commission.
Yes.
You're our favorite person so far.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Diaz, and I'm applying to represent the Housing Authority of the City of Santa Barbara on the Community Development and Human Services Committee. I have worked for the Housing Authority for the City of Santa Barbara for the last 10 years as a case manager. In this role, I've gained insights into the housing and human services needed of our residents, directly working with vulnerable populations to help them navigate challenges. In this role, I see this as an opportunity to further contribute to the community that I am passionate about, and I'm committed to collaborating with others to develop impactful solutions to our residents. My diverse background, dedication, and commitment to service would be a valuable asset to the group as we work towards our shared goals, and I'm willing to devote the time necessarily to serve if appointed.
All right, very good. Do we have any questions for Ms. Diaz? We don't. Thank you so much for applying. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. And as I said, we're a little ahead of the game here. I'm going to ask once again if Peter Smith is in the room?
Yes.
Okay. You're not late. We're early. So, Neighborhood Advisory Council.
My apologies. My apologies.
Yeah. Like I said, it's not our usual pattern to be ahead of the game here, so. All right, very good.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse and members of council. My name is Peter Smith, and I've been a resident of Santa Barbara for 22 years, and today I'm applying to be on the Neighborhood Advisory Council. I feel as if the Neighborhood Advisory Council is an important but currently underused board in the City of Santa Barbara. The goal of this body, I think, should be to serve as an intermediary between the people of Santa Barbara and city council. So often, I think council is all too, and then you, Mayor Rouse, are all too familiar with hearing from the hyper-civically engaged, that 5% that's ready and willing to comment on any and every issue. But that only makes up a small sliver of the community. What I think the Neighborhood Advisory Council is meant to do is to really go out into the community, find that 95% of opinions, and represent them to council in an effective way. As a graduate with the degree in political science, as well as being, living here my entire life, and some part of my family has lived here for 100 years, since the 1920s, I feel as if my skills, as well as the neighborhood connections that I have, can facilitate the Neighborhood Advisory Council's goals and objectives, and I'm ready, willing, and able to take the time necessary to accomplish this task. I wish to transform the Neighborhood Advisory Council from not just another unknown civic advisory board, but to one that is actively involved in the community. From publishing perhaps a quarterly newsletter or hosting meetups in the beautiful city parks, there's so much that the Neighborhood Advisory Council ought to do, and in order to foster, to foster those viewpoints that council so desperately needs to make informed and engaged decisions. Thank you.
All right, very good. Are there any questions for Mr. Smith? Ms. Gutierrez.
Could you tell me a little bit about your background, what you do for a living?
Yeah, of course.
All your suggestions were great. Actually, it was really nice to hear the community engagement part.
Yeah.
But I just want to know a little bit about you and, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I have been a resident of Santa Barbara for 22 years. My dad has been here since the 70s, and my family, my great-grandfather moved here in the 1920s. And for me, I went to Laguna Blanca High School, and then I was, I was here for college, for COVID, and then I spent a year, about a year and a half, at Boston College, where I got a degree in political science there as well. Right now, I am currently working as a legal assistant for a local attorney in town, as well as a director's assistant for a production company up in Ojai.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you very much for applying. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Let's see, is Craig Bennett here? There we go. I love this early enthusiasm by people. This is great.
Try to make you all happy.
This is Airport Commission, by the way.
Airport and Water, actually.
Okay, very good.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you very much for your time today. My name's Craig Bennett. Been a, lived in Santa Barbara about 16 years now, currently reside on the West Side, and I'm a volunteer for Airport and/or Water Commission. Why am I here today? I've lived here about a decade and a half, and the city has given me so much. I can point to specific examples. When we were renting and had a water main break and there's no water shut off, had a water truck there in 20 minutes. This was 15 years ago. Evacuated during the T fire. Clear communication from emergency services. We know what to do and where to go. Down to the more mundane basics, like needing to renew my security badge at the airport and having someone friendly and addressing that immediate need. It's time to give something back after a decade and a half, and that's what leads me to apply today. Some of the specific skills that I bring, I spent about 10 years doing scientific research, including four years at UCSB, so I'll sum that up by just saying I know my way around statistics and also spreadsheets. Since that time, I eventually came to a decision. I either had to stay with academia and move to London, Ontario, Canada, or leave academia and stay here. I decided to leave academia. I've been in software for the last 12 years. Spent several years as a software engineer, and then I've spent the last 10 years doing software management. Currently Senior Director with a financial technology firm in the Bay Area, where I manage a group of 100 people on a $32 million budget. Along the way, I've found other ways to give back to the community, including five years with a local nonprofit. These are the general reasons why I think I could be an asset for both, either the Airport Board or the Water Board. With specific regard to the airport, my interest there is that I'm a private pilot, and I grew up as a private pilot here in Santa Barbara. It's probably not hyperbole to say I've spent more time above the airport than in the terminal, and I think that knowledge of airport operations and FAA regulations means that I can contribute meaningfully to the Airport Commission. With regard to water, I can admit to no specific previous knowledge of water treatment or wastewater treatment, only that this is a technical topic that I find uniquely fascinating, interesting, and that I could very much get into the details of. You can't live in Santa Barbara too long without having to understand the diverse sources of water that are necessary to supply the city's needs. Multiple reservoirs, multiple tunnels, state water, groundwater, water conservation, desalination. It takes a large number of technical sources to provide that need. I would like to be able to serve in that capacity. So, I'll try to end there, give you back some of your time, or maybe end right on time. If there's a need for me to serve, I would like to do so. If now's not the right time, I look forward to doing so in the future.
All right, very good. Questions for Mr. Bennett?
Mr. Jordan? Thank you. Do you have a priority order on those two? Can I ask that?
I know that there are several candidates already for Airport Commission.
On both of them.
So, wherever I'm most needed.
Where, for Airport?
Either.
Either one.
Either, equally.
Yeah.
Okay.
Your choice.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah, cheers.
Further questions for Mr. Bennett? Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Let's see, Sullivan Israel. And, Mr. Israel, you've got four committees down here.
Yes.
And there may be some, I get the qualification, maybe it will serve on more than one, but we'll probably ask you to prioritize if you have a priority for those different ones.
Yeah, absolutely. So, good afternoon. I'm glad I got here early. Glad we're early. My name's Sullivan Israel, but you guys probably already know that. As I said in the statement that I sent in, I've lived here since I was a kid. I love this city. The friends that I make outside of the city, they call me like Santa Barbara's best spokesman because I always talk about Santa Barbara. So, I have a great historical reference for how our city came to be as it is today. I absolutely love local history. I've been a local tour guide for three years. I started my own walking tour based on all that knowledge, especially the planning history as well, and how we got here. And that's why I have, in fact, applied to be on four different things, spreading myself a bit wide. I actually first applied to do this when I was 17, before you heard who I was, and I didn't actually come in, I think I did the interview online, but, so I'm glad to apply again. And this time, I'm applying for Planning Commission, Neighborhood Advisory Council. Those are definitely my top two. Similar to what Peter Smith said, I'm really interested in bringing the community voice into city decisions. As I'm sure you know, I've been leading a local advocacy group, and I feel like I could be a great bridge between the things I hear there and what you guys hear, because so many people can't make it to make public comment. A great example that would be relevant for the Neighborhood Advisory Council or for the Planning Commission, some of the new curb ramps that have been built, I know people that live near them, and they've been taking pictures of how people have been sort of skidding over them and leaving tire marks. And so, maybe they need to have reflectors added to them, right? So, that's like a little bit of what planners might call neighborhood knowledge that might not reach it all the way into city hall, and I'd love to sort of bring some of those ideas in. For the Planning Commission, I know I'm young to be applying. I'm very aware of that, so I would be honored if you chose me to do it. I'll also say that thanks to my age, I did just graduate from planning school, so the knowledge is still fresh in my head, as well as all the new and innovative practices in planning that people who haven't been in school might not, you know, have caught up on. I'm also kind of a nerd. I, you know, read the city's general plan for fun, so I'm very well aware of all the different city policies. And so, as a commissioner, I would keep a very sharp eye out on when developers are following those policies, are enhancing our city, based on all the different priorities we have, like the AUD program and the ADU program, which also brings me to my last point, which would also be very helpful on the Neighborhood Advisory Council, which is sort of being a bridge to the public to also explain how the city works, so going in the other direction. And I've found that through doing Strong Towns, a lot of people don't know how the city functions. They get confused of what the SSAC is, or what is city council doing with the state street, or what's the difference between ADU and AUD. And so, I'd also love to be a bridge for you guys to the public, to have a two-way street there. So, thank you very much for considering me.
All right, very good. Question for Mr. Israel. Ms. Ned?
Thank you, Mayor Rouse, and thank you, Mr. Israel, for applying. So, in reading your application, too, you have a background in civil engineering.
Yes.
As well. And so, I think we hear about you a lot from the sort of the planning side of it, but in some of these committees you're applying for, how might your civil engineering background inform your decisions?
That's a really interesting question. Thank you. Yeah, so my undergrad is in civil engineering, and I did that at UCLA, although it was half online because of COVID. So, for two years, I was actually here. But during my civil engineering education, it's super broad, so I did structural, geotechnical, and also transportation. And I sort of immediately knew I loved transportation. So, that's where I did my specialty classes, and that's why I decided to pursue a master's in planning. Also, my master's is, I have two masters, also in civil engineering. And so, my main reference for civil engineering is a little bit of hydrology, which is like drainage and stuff, so that pertains to creeks. I find that really fascinating. But mostly transportation. So, I've done a lot of transportation modeling, VMT analysis, which are all super important when developments are being proposed, how that's going to affect the city, and sort of looking at it at a more technical level, which is what I've been doing in my job as well. I've sort of been doing both, where I can use the planning language to describe how a beautiful building might enhance the street or make it feel more pedestrian-friendly, but also actually try and figure out, oh, you know, where are there collisions happening? How is the street design affecting safety? And those kinds of things, which fall more under civil engineering. Thanks.
All right, further, oh, Mr. Jordan?
Thank you.
Yes.
I have to apologize that I didn't bring my laptop in today. What's your current application, or current occupation?
Oh, okay, yeah. I just started a new job as a civil analyst slash transportation planner. So, I'm doing both. And so, that includes, so far, I've done a bunch of grant writing for local jurisdictions to try and win them money for roadway projects, multimodal stuff, road, mostly related to road widenings or reconfigurations or multimodal projects. So, yeah, that's what I'm focusing on.
I just know we've engaged in the past, but you're firmly entrenched here in housing and where you're living now, in the city.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm a full-time permanent resident of Santa Barbara.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Further questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see, I can see Matt Labrie is not here. Kevin Nichols?
Yes, sir.
And this is for the Airport Commission.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse, and esteemed members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. My name is Kevin Nichols, and I'm seeking employment at Santa Barbara Airport Commission. While I may be younger than others, I have dedicated the entirety of my adult life in service to others. Growing up in Northern California, I enlisted in the Marine Corps at age 18. Serving as a crew chief and fly line mechanic for the MV-22 Osprey, I gained valuable insight into international airports as well as some more austere airfields. My time as a sergeant resulted in essential leadership and decision-making skills, qualities that both would feel benefit the Airport Commission. It was during my time in the military that I always made a point before or after deployments to spend time with family and friends. When my childhood best friend moved here to Santa Barbara, I knew I had to visit. I immediately fell in love with the area, as well as the sense of community that you've all built, and it became my goal to move back here. June of 2023, I did just that. I moved here and started studying aeronautics at California Aeronautical University. I also have the amazing responsibility to be entrusted as an airframe and powerplant mechanic. As an AMP on the field, I'm not subject to one seat in one plane. From the two-seats Cessna 150s to the 150-plus seats of the airlines, I have the unique ability to interact with the majority of the field. It is through this unique opportunity that I get to hear a lot of concerns of the airport, as well as the community. Now, having lived all over the world, I call Santa Barbara my home. I'm eager to serve on this commission to help guide the future of the airport while honoring its rich history. I'm more than willing and able to devote the time to such an important issue. As a pilot myself, I truly appreciate the work of the current staff and commissioners in addressing the airport's challenges. However, I feel there are issues that need to be voiced. The Santa Barbara Airport is not just a place for planes to land and take off. It's a community that is rich in history, and it is a place that the young can learn from the more experienced. If appointed to the commission, I am committed to continuing that legacy. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, very good. Are there questions from next Nichols? Thank you so much for applying.
Yes, sir.
And we'll go back to Matt Labrie. Mr. Labrie, we're a little ahead of schedule, so you're up. This is for Downtown Parking Committee.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's my pleasure to be here. I've served on the Downtown Parking Committee for a few years, and happy to continue to serve. As you know, we're an advisory committee. We ever see the downtown parking system, which has played an important role in the vitality of downtown. As you may understand, that parking assets were really created to help the downtown reinvent itself, to develop after, you know, when there was really no good mechanisms to help the downtown reemerge out of its, you know, its state of being in competition with some of the other areas. So, the downtown parking system is important. I love serving. It's been a pleasure, and if you need me, I am here for you for another term.
Very good. Do we have a question for Mr. Labrie? Mr. Jordan?
I have no question, but I can't resist. Usually, when somebody's been around for 100 years, you start to look at them sideways a little, but I can just say, for as long as we've been associated- But I can just say, for as long as we've been associated and you've been doing this, you've, you have done the work, and you remain today one of the best historical knowledge bases for this particular effort. Despite whatever life has thrown at your way, you've persevered, and just want to thank you again for re-upping.
Thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Jordan, or Mr. Jordan, Mr. Labrie? They're buddies. All right, very good. Thank you so much for applying. Let's see, well, it turns out Mark Filibosi is next up. Another indication of how far ahead of the game we are here. This is for Planning Commission.
Correct. Mayor and City Council, thanks for your time. You guys do hear a lot of these, so I appreciate it. It means a lot knowing that the people can come up and give their spiel. I currently serve, so my name is Mark Filibosi, and currently serve as the Vice Chair for the Sister Cities. And it's been a great experience for me and one I'd like to build on with the Planning Commission. I'm very passionate about it, as I've been learning more about the city, learning more about the opportunities here. First and foremost, I feel confident in that I meet the needed qualifications. I have my California real estate license. I have an MBA from UCLA. I own multiple properties here in town, which has also gone through the renovation process. And as a consultant for ten years, I've been advising international insurance companies on multi-million dollar deals. So I want to use these minutes to emphasize where I'll be using my time, energy, and experiences as commissioner. I want to focus on staying true to the Planning Commission's true intention, which from the website is exercising decisions with, consistent with the city charter. The Planning Commission exists to be an extension of the city charter and grant decisions that adhere to the policy as set forth by the city and the City Council. Countless hours have been dedicated to developing a general plan, and the Planning Commission has the exciting role to help navigate that plan to maximize the public good. It's a straightforward mandate with a powerful impact. It's ensure adherence and move forward with projects that align to our city plan. To that end, each Planning Commission agenda item has its own unique circumstances. And though proposals can get bogged down by sincere and committed advocates on both sides, I pledge to look at each presentation individually based on the specific facts and attributes of that project, and then act consistently with the city charter for the best of our community. Focusing on the individual facts will continue to build a sustainable Santa Barbara community. It does not mean the applicant will always be happy or satisfied, but it does create consistency and clarity for our community. Just this last week, we've seen what can happen when a Planning Commission does not act with objectivity and for the community and in a straightforward manner. To reiterate, I am focused on the Planning Commission's straightforward mandate in order to have a long-term positive impact to serve our amazing community. Thank you.
Are there questions for Mr. Filibosi? I have one now. Have you been around the Planning Commission enough to understand the workload? Because it is one of our more work-intensive committees.
I do. I do. I've spoken with Brian Barnwell and Donald DeLucio, DeLucio, there you go. And have spoken to a couple of you up there and do fully understand that there is, it is heavy, and, you know, I was given some thought to it. Fortunately or unfortunately, as a consultant, that is, that is what we do. You know, we've got to take in a lot of information quickly and ramp up quickly, so I feel confident.
And you feel like you've got the time to be able to dedicate to that?
I do. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be here if I didn't think so.
Okay, very good. Ms. Sneddon has a question.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on something you just said, and I didn't want to assume I knew what you were referring to. So you said just this week, we saw what can happen when the Planning Commission, what are you referring to?
The Montecito Planning Commission. Yeah, no, not, not.
I'm glad I asked.
Yeah, not, not around. That's why it's local, local within a couple mile radius. Yeah, I think it speaks for itself what can happen.
Yeah, you don't have to expand beyond that. I just wanted to make sure I didn't want to fill in my own blanks.
Yeah, not insinuating the current Planning Commission or the Santa Barbara.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Further question for Mr. Filibosi?
Cool.
Very good. Thank you so much for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we find ourselves a half hour ahead of schedule, believe it or not. So I suggest we, Mr. Freeman, you have something?
Mr. Mayor, since we do have nobody, maybe we could do our report outs right now so we get those done.
That would be a good idea.
By the time we report, maybe somebody else will come in.
I knew you'd be thinking about that. Mr. Freeman, why don't you start?
All right, let me find my notes here. All right, so this is just events that we went to over the week. So I attended, along with the mayor and council member Gutierrez, Oscar Gutierrez, the League of Cities Annual Conference. And there was appointed as the president of the Channel Cities, or the Channel Counties Division, which is San Luis, Santa Barbara, and Ventura Counties. So I'll be holding that for the next two years. And we'll be serving on that board with the past president Erica Stewart of San Luis, Mayor of San Luis, Laura Hernandez from City Port Huaynimi, and then the San Luis rep will be voted on at a later time. So I'm looking forward to that and appreciate that opportunity. And also participated in the annual meeting there of the Coastal Cities Group, where we talked about the neighborhood approach to coastal planning, among other things. And then also attended the memorial for Tony Pagetti, which was very emotional moving, and just wanted to express my support for the family and those who knew Mr. Pagetti, and a big loss to the city of Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I also attended the memorial for Tony Pagetti, and just wanted to say a personal note about when he described the mental health challenges and needs of firefighters and first responders. He really educated me personally on resources that were lacking and resources that could be brought. And I really feel like we need to carry on in that honor of asking sort of, what would Tony advise when we're, when we're looking at some of those issues? And we're having this moment earlier in the meeting, but I was, I was hoping that we could close the meeting at the end in his honor.
And we'll do that. Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
Just in case I haven't chilled at this particular venue, a friend of mine is writing a book about her grandfather, who is a City Council member in the 1920s. It's Pat, Pat Kerd, some of you know her, and about the history of her grandfather in Santa Barbara. He was a medical doctor, one of the very first in that part of the century. And it will be tomorrow night at 5:30 at the Santa Barbara Historical Museum. Part of that lecture will involve Neil Graffey, which is always worth the price of most admissions, and it is sold out. But if one of you or one of my close friends listening is interested in going, I know the right people. So, but it should, it should be really interesting. It's not often, and maybe it is often, it's not often in my life I get to listen to somebody talk about one of their relatives from multiple generations back and present a new, new book that chronicles that, so.
Yeah, I talked to Pat about that book. I helped her with that section. She wrote on you, by the way.
We're, we're both, we're both equally mentioned, I'm afraid. Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor.
I also attended the League of Cities, and it was pretty cool to be able to talk about some issues. They had a whole lecture about e-bikes and what other cities were doing, so that was a pretty, pretty good lecture. The mayor sat in with me on that one. I also attended the Santa Barbara Independence Best Fest, a celebration for the Reader's Choice of Best Businesses in Town. I attended the San Marcos High School Alumni Hall of Fame induction of San Marcos High School former athletes, one of them being my friend who I played football with and went on to the NFL. And it was just great to be able to see a lot of these old classmates getting recognized for the achievements they, they achieved. Then attended the Housing Day at Delegaro Plaza, so that was great. A lot of great services being offered to the community. And attended the Celebration of Life of Tony, and that was just beautiful to see hundreds of people come out to honor his memory. I attended the D'Elilas Martos Celebration that was on State Street and at the art museum and Contemporary Art Museum. It was really cool. They had a whole market at Paseo Nuevo parking lot. And also attended the UCSB Latinos Alumni Dinner. And that, too, is great to be able to meet people. Like, for example, my parents never went to school. When they, when they immigrated here, we were the first in our, in our family to go to school. But it like really trips me out to meet people that are older than my parents, Latinos, who have college degrees, because it's like, didn't know that they existed, but they do. And I got to meet them because of the UCSB Alumni Club, so that's great. And then, yeah, I think that's about everything else.
All right, very good. We are ahead of schedule. Our next scheduled interview is at 4:05. Yeah, we do, we'll be can, well, let me ask, who, who is in the room? What's your name, sir?
Adam Stanowick, 4:15.
Okay. Very good. I know you. And yes, sir, you're?
I'm Ray Fazenden, I'm 4:30, I believe.
Okay, there we are. Well, let's go ahead and, and have Adam up here. Mr. Stanowick, come on up and. Familiar face?
Yeah.
And we're talking about Harbor Commission here, so go right ahead.
That's right. Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Adam Stanowick, and I'm applying for a second term on the City of Santa Barbara's Harbor Commission. I'd say probably over the last four years, I've been most proud of always being able to speak my mind and to have an opinion, because I think the last thing we need on one of these boards and commissions is somebody who is just kind of willing to go ahead and just kind of agree with everything and not provide any valuable insight. I know for me, I gather a lot of my facts, and I always speak to my community. I am a boat owner, a slip holder, a liveaboard, a Santa Barbara yacht club member, and really a client of all the, of many of the businesses that are at the harbor. And pretty much, I'm at the harbor really almost every day. I think the harbor and the waterfront is very well-run. I have good communication with the director, the harbor patrol, as well as a lot of the staff there, and really just great experience across the board as a boat owner, as well as being a member of the Harbor Commission there. One of the most important parts of the Harbor Commission, that's something that I'm very involved with since really my first month, and also it's something that we discuss pretty much throughout the year, is the budget. It's something that's very important, and one thing before I joined the Harbor Commission was something I didn't realize was that there is no outside tax dollars that are funding the waterfront budget, which I was really surprised about. It's really a delicate balance of revenues and expenditures on an operating budget, as well as a whole bunch of capital improvement plans. But for me, this is something that I really enjoy. During my, in my professional life and my day job, I serve as a certified financial planner and registered investment advisor. So this knowledge, I think, has really helped me in terms of when we discuss things such as fee increases, when we discuss parking, or a lot of these expenditures for capital improvements at the harbor. I really look forward to kind of the problem solving behind this, as well as I know we have two major projects coming up in the next few years with Marina Two, Three, and Four rebuilding, as well as the Rock River Vetment Wall, which I really hope to be, be part of that conversation. So really, not only am I someone who is at the harbor all the time, and really just a math nerd who loves budgets, but I'm also a father to two little kids, and when I think about the decisions that I make, really, those decisions not only affect me, but really the future generations who are going to inherit this great resource. And with that being said, I think my insight and my contributions have been well-received by the other members of the commission. The last two years, I've served as Vice Chair. I'm currently serving as the Chairman of the Harbor Commission. And, you know, if you, if you find the commission and kind of what we're doing helpful, and you think that we are headed in the right direction, I'd be happy to serve another term and take any questions.
All right, very good. Any questions for Mr. Stanowick? Thank you so much. Thanks for applying.
Great, thank you.
Didn't recognize you in a coat and tie. Ray Fazenden? And this is for the Neighborhood Advisory Council.
Yeah. Not exactly sure exactly what it is, except as it's described, I tried to attend one last year, and they weren't holding them because there wasn't a lot of people. But I just, I live in the area. I'm retired. I spend a lot of time in the neighborhood. Lot of stuff going on in East Beach right now, a lot of traffic problems, a lot of parking problems, development of Dwight Murphy. There's a hotel going in, a lot of freeway on and off-ramp stuff, Tri County, things like that. It got real busy real quick. So I'm just offering my time to offer some insight as to what the neighborhood's talking about, or what some of the concerns are moving forward. Pretty much as simple as that.
All right, very good. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fazenden? All right, thank you so much for applying. Appreciate that. And Ms. Arrowly, is this an applicant, by the way? If we can take them if he, sorry?
We have Richard Axelrod here.
Okay, very good. Well, Mr. Axelrod, we'll take you now if you'd like. Yeah. I know you didn't even get a chance to warm up even. All righty, this is for the Rental Housing Mediation Board. Anytime you're ready.
Honored City Council and Board Members. I've lived in Santa Barbara for more than fifty years. I've been honored in, serve on several City Council member, boards over the years. My primary love is for the Rental Housing Mediation Task Service, at which I've been almost twenty years on the, on the board. In the time of renting to citizens, I am concerned that those who don't have a voice in finding rental places in Santa Barbara. I work diligently with them, both a property owner and as a rental property owner, to find and seek places for them. I I support those who have, who do not have a voice to be heard, and certainly all of you have been concerned with the problem as well. There is so much available, I think, in our, in our, in our city to provide adequate housing for them that is usurped by conditions perhaps are beyond our control. My son, my sons, all my, two of my kids graduate in both UCSB and Santa Barbara City College. Today, a large portion of your constituency are occupying apartments that could be housed for working-class workers and for low-income people, and that's been usurped by outside sources. Only, only less than forty percent of the students at UCSB and City College are from Santa Barbara. At least they were a few years ago, last time I did the poll. It's been a grave concern and changes the complexion of our community from having an adequate workforce, as we all know, must come from north or south. It's my concern to evaluate somehow, somewhere along the line, to recognize that City College is providing, it's an incredible institution. Only less than forty percent of your constituency is from Santa Barbara. Of the capacity at the, at the college, is my concern to gravely, seriously look at the relocation and provide workforce training for City College members rather than the graduates that three, four, five, six people will go into an apartment that is necessary for working-class people that's no longer here. That's my primary issue. I love this town, and I think we're self-destructing. And this is one of the ways, an easy, in my mind, an easy solution to creating more workforce housing for your constituency. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Question by Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I wouldn't have asked this except for the strength of your comments. Is this in the purview of the Rental Housing Mediation Board? The issue that you're bringing forward? Is this something that you consider when you're mediating between tenants and landlords? Is this something that you consider when you're mediating between tenants and landlords?
I can only speak for myself.
That's I'm asking you as yourself.
Yeah. It is something of grave concern for myself and within conversations, as in most community members. We're on a road to self-destruction here.
And...
Let me answer your question.
Thank you. So that, so would you say you believe that's in the purview of the Rental Housing Mediation Board, and does it inform your decisions as you're mediating between tenants and landlords?
The Board does an incredible job of solving the issues of working-class people who have, or any person has problem with tenant landlord disputes. I think I've been proud for over 20 years, services, serving on this Board. But it's, I just shake my head and see that we're self, in my opinion, we're self-destructing.
And thank you for your service for all of those decades. So if a student was the tenant who was having an issue, and they happen to be a student, or it's a group of five students living in a household from City College or UCSB, and they're having an issue before the Board, my concern is that, whether I agree with you or disagree with you about the issues of that, my concern is that just based on the strength of your comments, that how does that influence, or does it influence how you mediate?
Okay, the university has vast lands out there to provide for their students, of which they're not, as of now. Vast lands. Okay, Santa Barbara does not. And yet, we're still providing incredible education for these students who happen to be lucky enough to go there, of which only 40% of the active students are from Santa Barbara, your constituency. The rest are outsiders that come in, take advantage of the incredible education system we have.
Thank you. Thank you for your answers. I have concerns that that may be outside the purview of this particular position.
Yeah, it is.
But thank you. I wanted to give the opportunity to answer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for applying. With that, we will take a break until 4:10.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if I could just interrupt. I am just, we didn't quite finish the discussion about the Community Development and Human Services Committee.
Okay.
So I thought, since we have a minute...
All right, I'm just taking my cues here, so...
Yeah, if I could just ask Councilmember Gutierrez if she still has questions around that, so that when I go back and look at the issue of the composition of that Board, I can include her questions in that research that my office is going to do.
Okay.
I just saw that there was a vacant for the Latino and African-American member, and just based on the population in the city and the efforts that the city has done to really include the African-American community, if, you know, we can just really do our best in outreach into those communities.
Okay, so your question's regarding outreach to that community to get Board members. So I'll follow up on that and let you know what that outreach involves. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
So we're going to follow up and get answers to Councilmember Friedman's questions on that.
That'd be excellent.
Thanks.
All right, then with that, we will go ahead and adjourn until 4:10. Reconvene and get back to going with our interviews. Next up is Brad Blue. I don't believe he's in the house, but I know that Dave Taber is, so why don't we come on up? And this is for the MTD Board.
Yes, sir.
District, oh, the district board, yeah.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah.
And I hope to obtain an additional term on the MTD Board Directors. One word for the last four years has been interesting. Slow, steady rebound from the COVID emergency. I think we got to see that, who the critical workers were and how they got to work. They got to work on the MTD buses, so we did everything we could to keep them safe, keep our drivers safe, and deal with the reduction in service that went along with that. We lost quite a few bus drivers during that emergency, so it took us a few years to recover. Figure out salaries may have been a major issue there, so we did what we had to do to be competitive on that, in that regard. And we're now at about 120 drivers, and we have no excuse but to put the buses out on We also, in the last couple of years, were, I'm proud of, we did an employee and salary equity survey. Again, recruiting in Santa Barbara is not easy, so that helped us, and we're all of a sudden approaching full employment once again. I think my main wish to be on the Board, be a Director for another four years, is we entered into an agreement with a developing partner a couple of years ago for a project on Kai Real. And without having any other development planning experience on the Board of Directors, I've been critical in my experience and knowledge in steering that project through the process. It's just gotten to the stage where there's a little pushing and shoving going on. So I think my steadfastness there and my experience will be very helpful in guiding the Board in the next round. And I would like to see us get another step farther in our battery electrification, battery electric bus electrification process. We're, again, reopening Terminal Two out in the county. We just made a purchase for another eight electric buses, so we'll be installing the charging systems out there. We have 16, eight, we have 24 electric buses in the yard. We have another eight, 16, 20 buses on order. So we're a good step along the way, but I think my input in that process has been that we need some resiliency. The worst-case scenario is maybe all those buses have the same failure in the same day, there's no power. So I'm pushing for maintaining a tiny, tiny little fleet, because we're very important to have those vehicles on the road during emergencies to get people where they need to go. So we'll keep them locked up in a garage. We won't put the diesel fumes in the air, but when we need them, they're going to be there.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Are there more questions?
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Nedden.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. And I just wanted to do a follow-up on, we've had so many discussions about micro-transit, mini-transit, or different forms of transit, and we talk about MTD Board a lot, but I'm not sure we're talking with MTD Board, and just if you have any, I mean, is that being talked about at that Board, or any updates on that?
Didn't mean to interrupt. Yes, Councilwoman, we are talking about that. We have received funding two and a half, three years ago for a micro-transit project, a small one. We purchased the vans for that, and one of my thoughts on why we need to be more resilient and not just go all whole hog into one technology is we bought four electric vans, and they didn't have the capacity they told us they did. So we've since gone out and are trying to find another electric backup for that, and at the same time using some gas-powered vans to get the project going. We're looking at an experimental phase. I mentioned bus drivers being important. We're finally up to 120 bus drivers, so we're just about to start that project. We've chosen Goleta as the start-off point for that, but if everything goes, all the indicators go the way we think they're going to go, we'll be in Santa Barbara and carpentry before you know it.
Thank you.
Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just another example of, I'm sure you don't hear it enough, so I just want to say thank you. You've been there forever.
I see.
And much of it has been what I'd call a slog through challenging times, and you haven't packed up your bag and moved on when it got tough, but you've been resilient in that manner, and so just want to say thank you for your significant service.
Thank you, Mayor, for attending.
You're welcome.
Any further questions, Mr. Taber? All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Let's see, John Maloney. This is the Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals.
Good afternoon. My name's John Maloney. I'm an electrical engineer, certified in fire alarm design. I've been on the Fire and Code Board for the City Building Department since B.C., before COVID. I think this will be my fourth term if approved. I think it's important to volunteer for different committees. I volunteer for several different things around town. This one is technically oriented, and I think with my electrical engineering knowledge and fire alarm knowledge, I'm uniquely qualified to assist the Board in a lot of the decision-making we need to make. Thank you.
Okay, we have any questions for Mr. Maloney? Thanks once again. Appreciate your continued service, and this is one of those other boards we need to... Oh, Mr. Gutierrez, oh, there you are. I understand you're late.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for applying for this. What would you say is the biggest issue when it comes to electrical safety in the community?
The biggest one we're seeing lately is arc fault circuit interrupters, AFCI circuit breakers. Old panels don't have those. Lot of remodels are being done, and those aren't being installed. Code requires them to be installed. Putting those in definitely stops fires.
How do you think we could address that better?
Well, the code requires it. The City Building Department inspectors, when they see that it hasn't been done, they ask for it to be done. So I think it's being taken care of, but there's remodels that occur without a permit being pulled, and that happen internally that aren't obvious to an inspector driving by. So things happen without the city's knowledge.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, very good. Further questions for Mr. Maloney? All right, thanks very much. Appreciate it. And then we have another break in the action here. Ms. Early, I think that our next scheduled one is at 4:45, so we should probably go ahead and once again recess until that time and...
Yes, I agree.
Avoid casual conversation. So we will reconvene at 4:45. Thank you. We will reconvene here, and your name, sir, and what you're pointing for?
John Price, and I'm applying for the Metropolitan Transit District Board and the Parks Recreation Committee.
Okay, excellent. You're a little bit early, which is perfect with us.
About 45 minutes, but really, who's counting?
Hey, works for us. Please go right ahead.
So, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, I moved here from Houston, Texas. We have beaches there, but nothing quite like this, obviously, but I, a little bit of my background, I'm a project manager with a background in construction and operational improvement, having worked for Disney World, the San Andres Band of Chumash Indians, and currently working for a medical device manufacturer in Goleta. And I was really drawn to these committee assignments, because I really, now that I no longer work in San Andres, I work here in town, I really have an opportunity to give back to my community. Houston has massive parks and a wide network of mass transit, but from my experience living here, Santa Barbara has done so much more with less, and I really want to be part of that legacy. Specifically around the, for the Parks and Recreation Committee, when I was moving out here, I had to make a decision between moving to Slow and Santa Barbara, and I moved here for two reasons: State Street and the green space. I currently live on the east side, about equidistant between the east side neighborhood park and East Beach, and I love seeing the community in these spaces, whether it's the community gardens or pop-ups on the beach. It's really something unique to the city that I've seen, coming from a place where it's so easy to get lost in the crowd. Additionally, since I see I only have a minute and a half left, I am also interested in the, so I want to support the Parks and Recreation Committee. I also, when looking at the Metropolitan Transit District, Mayor of Bogota Enrique Penyalosa has a quote, "A good public transit is rich people riding it, not everyone in their own car." And coming from Houston, I can tell you, the Katy Freeway runs right through the middle of town. It is 26 lanes of traffic. And guess what project they are doing right now? They're looking to widen that street. One more lane is not going to solve it. So being able to be a steward of our public transit here in town is something I'm very interested in, because we have to... interested in because we have to invest our way through it and steward our way through it, not just try and power through with more cars. So thank you very much for your consideration and your time.
All right. Very good. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Price? Well, thank you for coming in. Appreciate it.
Good for having me.
Okay. I'm going to go down the list here. I do not see Benjamin Peterson yet, so is one of, are you Victoria Martinez? Come on up, please, here. We're a little bit ahead of schedule.
Just for here? Okay, great.
And you can pull that mic right down, too.
Okay, great. So, good evening. My name is Victoria Martinez, and I'm honored to be here today with the hope of joining the Santa Barbara Youth Council. I have long admired the Santa Barbara Youth Council's role in addressing issues that affect the youth of our city, and I'm eager to contribute to this important work. In particular, I'm passionate about advocating for mental health awareness and support for young people, a cause that I feel strongly about due to both personal experiences and observations within my community. The pandemic has had a profound impact on the lives of many students, causing heightened stress, anxiety, and uncertainty. I have witnessed how many of my peers have struggled to cope with these challenges, and I believe that fostering better communication between adults and teenagers is key to addressing mental health issues. I want to help bridge the gap by ensuring that these concerns and needs of the youth are recognized and acted upon. As a dedicated and empathetic person, I find that my ability to connect with others allows me to be a strong advocate for change. In my role as student government class president, I've had the opportunity to lead my peers, take initiative on projects, and work collaboratively towards shared goals. These experiences have not only cultivated my leadership skills, but have also strengthened my commitment to making a positive difference. I believe that communication and empathy are essential for understanding and addressing the issues that affect the youth of Santa Barbara. If given the opportunity to serve on this council, my primary focus would be on expanding access to mental health resources. Despite the progress that has been made, there is still a lack of readily available and accessible resources for teenagers who need them. My goal is to work alongside other council members to ensure that these resources are not only available, but also well-known and easily accessible to those who may be struggling. I am confident that my dedication, leadership experience, and passion for mental health advocacy will enable me to contribute meaningfully to the Santa Barbara Youth Council. I am committed to creating a lasting impact that will benefit the well-being of young people in our community. Thank you for considering my application. I'm excited with the possibility of serving on the council and working towards a better future for the youth of Santa Barbara.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Martinez? Well, thank you very much for coming in and applying.
Thank you.
Nicholas Gaston?
Thank you. Good afternoon, city council. My name is Nicholas Gaston. I'm a freshman at Santa Barbara High School, and it would be an honor to have the opportunity to commit my time on various issues that directly impact youth and our community. I'm interested in becoming a member of the Youth Council because they work with city leaders and the community on issues that impact teens and greater Santa Barbara, such as the gun ordinance that was passed last year in collaboration with Moms Demand Action. Some of the skills that will make me as successful in serving our community are that I'm good at creating videos and editing, so I think that I can create visual stories that can help advertise the issues that we are working on. I have experience in customer service, I am responsible and can collaborate, share ideas, and work well with others. I want to be appointed to the Youth Council because I feel as though I'm meant to be a part of something bigger than myself. Because I live with my grandparents, I have sensitivity about how my actions impact others. I'm interested in helping come up with a plan surrounding bike safety. There's a strong amount of controversy surrounding the topic of bikers in Santa Barbara. As an e-biker myself, I had to prove to my parents that I was responsible enough to handle an expensive e-bike. I took free classes in town through the Santa Barbara Bike Coalition. I secured an internship so I could learn how to maintain my own bike without extra expenses. I did many things over the past year to earn my parents' trust. However, I realize not all teens or adults are as responsible, and concerns raised on social media are valid. E-bike safety and how we are viewed impacts me and my peers now. I also realize this issue is complex and not simple. For example, we are changing housing laws and building more homes. Alternate forms of transportation for getting around town, parking, and are considering our environment is necessary to keep up with these changes. Education is also important. If we don't figure out how to make sure bikers are being safe, then my peers and I will be hit with a new concern in a couple of years when we start to drive. I will be a beginner driver and also worry about an e-biker in my blind spot. Together, we can come up with a better and safer plan for pedestrians and e-bikers to share State Street. Biking isn't going away anytime soon, so we need to figure out something to decrease the negative stereotypes and make bikes safe and welcome on the street today. Our environment will have less pollution in the air and on the streets, and it encourages people to get out of their houses, move their bodies, and interact with others. Santa Barbara is rapidly building new housing. Therefore, alternate forms of transportation is necessary. All alternate forms of transportation should be safe and accepted whether we choose to walk, run, bike, drive, or take a public form of transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job. Does anybody have a question for Mr. Gaston? Okay. Well done, and thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Running for office right now, that will You know, too much free time is a dangerous thing for this council, I have to say. With that, we're going to call up Mr. Peterson for his interview. And this is for Planning Commission, for all you people that are paying such rapt attention. Okay, here we go. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Benjamin Peterson, and for the better part of ten years, I have called Santa Barbara home. I went to college here undergrad and just finished my master's in public administration. Since 2018, I have worked for multiple members of the California Legislature. For the last five years, I have worked for State Senator Monique Lamon in both her Assembly and Senate offices, and I have served as the housing policy staff person and advisor to her dealing with housing policy and land use. This has provided me, I think, with a unique perspective in understanding state policy, legislative trends, the workings of state agencies, and the interchange between what the state is doing and how the city, City of Santa Barbara, is trying to comply with what's coming out of the state. And so focusing on that. In my capacity, I have helped secure state funding for city housing initiatives here in the City of Santa Barbara. I've led meetings between state agencies and local jurisdictions regarding land use, housing elements, development program issues. And this has ranged from the intricacies of specific projects to kind of broader general themes. Locally, I'm on the working group, trying to explore the creation of teacher and staff housing for Santa Barbara Unified School District. And I think I've tried to use my role to help benefit the district locally as much as possible. I love this community. I love Santa Barbara, and I want to contribute my skill set to the city. And so, in a more local way. I think we really do want to keep Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara. Our unique architecture is recognized around the world and has taken countless hours, over a hundred years, and all the people who've come before me to develop and preserve. I also want to preserve the character of this city, and I think one of the most important elements of our character is the people who make up our city. And this needs to be central. I will do my best to contribute to the decisions of the Planning Commission that benefit all the people that live and work here. The reality of the Planning Commission is that it's about the implementation of policy work, and this is a skill set that I can offer as a service to the city. I think there's no better place to get into the weeds than on the commission. As a staff person, I have great respect for the work that staff do, and the process that each respective body plays a role in, whether that's staff, the commission, or the council. I'm excited about the opportunity to contribute to the work that's already being done on the commission, and to engage and collaborate with staff, and to be a responsive and active participant in all the work that we may end up doing together. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Okay. Are there questions for Mr. Peterson? Mr. Friedman?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. You mentioned implementation of policy as one of the primary objectives of the Planning Commission. And given your background, your experience and background with state housing policy versus city and mandates coming down from the state, and a lot of the discussion that goes on at the Planning Commission on housing types of projects, what do you feel the role is of the Planning Commission in terms of trying to balance the state mandates on projects that come before it for housing?
Yeah, I think it's about interpreting the law and the findings as they're seen by staff and as recommended, and not trying to create policies as we go. So that's the work of the council, but I want to be respectful of that. I'm not trying to say that commission should get out ahead of the council.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for applying. So we, well, maybe I ask. I'm sure some of us others do, too. Maybe they all do. But we ask a lot of our Planning Commissioners, in addition to the half-a-day, half-a-day-a-week commitment. They serve as liaisons to other boards and commissions to be that conduit also for us. And then numerous committee meetings and, at least speaking for myself, conversations and engagements with council members. So I just want to ask the dumb question in the room, and that is, this has been totally vetted with Senator Lamon, and this type of time is available for you to put in?
Yes, it is. And I think that will be worked out with my current employer, the California Senate, and there is precedent for this across the state.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you, Mayor Rousen. Thank you, Mr. Peterson, for applying. And I think along these same lines, you definitely have a unique skill set and are uniquely informed on policies, maybe more so informed because you're in the policymaking office than maybe staff is at a given time, or maybe then the rest of council is at a given time, like maybe having awareness of things that are in the future for us, that we might not even be aware of, that we might need to be implementing in the future, that kind of thing. So I have a question along those lines, and then also in terms of conflict or apparent conflict even. And then when you're participating out in the community, I see you everywhere. You are so involved in housing policy and in different meetings. And how will you manage which hat you're wearing, or how to signal which hat you're wearing, or whether you're speaking as an individual or listening as an individual, or if things are at odds maybe even, if there's something that is coming down from the state that maybe the city is gearing up for fighting maybe even, and needing Planning Commission input on that? Just sort of how will you balance and really signal what might be apparent conflicts?
Yeah. Appreciate that. I have thought a bit about that. I will be very willing to recuse myself if the city attorney says, you know, I need to recuse myself off of any decision. I think what's clear is that I am not an elected official in my job. I don't make state policy. I work for somebody who does. I'm a staffer in the California Senate, and I think there is great precedent in our county and state for people who work for the state legislature and have their own, either elected to their own office or on a board or commission. And there are ethics and boundaries on that that I'm very willing to follow and be submissive to, if you will. Being clear in the community, yeah, absolutely, I would want to be clear in meaning like what hat I'm playing. I think there are a lot of people in this town who wear multiple hats, and I'll be sure to be very clear about that hat, so we're not putting the city in a bad position.
Thank you. I mean, I myself wear multiple hats, so I'm like very aware that there may be not a genuine legal conflict, but that there are times when it needs to be clear in communicating with people on whose behalf, even if it's just on your own individual behalf.
I'll be very clear about that.
Yeah.
Very sensitive to that. Open communication about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Peterson? Thank you so much for coming in and applying.
Thank you so much for your time.
What just happened to my screen? Hold on. There's the big bling. Hold on. Very good. Let's go with Ian Bauckey, please. And this is for MTD and TCC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Ian Bauckey. I am seeking to be appointed, reappointed, to the Transportation and Circulation Committee and also to one of the city's seat on the SB MTD Board of Directors. The reason I'm applying for both positions is because they both oversee local transportation policy and how Santa Barbara moves around, which is an area I'm very passionate about improving conditions for our local community. Some of you already know me, but for some background, I was born and raised here in the city of Santa Barbara, and I've had the chance to live in a few different parts of town, from Eucalyptus Hill to Hidden Valley, and now downtown Santa Barbara, where my partner and I currently live and work. I'm very familiar with the purpose and function of these committees, as I previously served on the TCC until mid-2022, when I moved to DC to do work in government affairs consulting. But I'm very glad to be back home for good, and I really just want to take this opportunity to continue my service once again and give back to this community, which has given me so much. While I was in DC, I also got my BA in political science and a master's in political management. In addition to my education, some of my other professional experiences that I think will impart some valuable expertise include the same position as Mr. Peterson, as a district representative for Senator Lamon, much newer to the team. Also, previous experience as a fellow for the National Association of County Governments, working on the American Rescue Plan, and even just informed by my old summer jobs here in town, doing food service on State Street and being a tour guide downtown. I've also attended schools from Santa Barbara Junior High to San Marcos. And the reason I bring all of these things up is because I think it informs me about the different needs of the different parts of the city as it pertains to transportation, and there are very clear, distinct regional and neighborhood disparities within and without the city of Santa Barbara. So part of the questions I'm supposed to answer are my thoughts on the city's vision statement on the circulation element of the general plan, which says, "While sustaining and increasing economic vitality and quality of life, Santa Barbara should be a city in which alternative forms of transportation and mobility are so available and attractive that the use of an automobile is a choice, not a necessity." I am 100% aligned with that vision personally. I also recognize, just from my experience in Santa Barbara and using all modes of transportation in Santa Barbara, that we are ways away from realizing that vision in this community. And so I'm very committed to not creating necessarily new policy in these roles, but supporting the policies like Vision Zero, the Climate Action Plan, pedestrian master plan. Pedestrian Master Plan, the Bicycle Master Plan, um, and making those a reality. Uh, if I may go on just a little bit longer. Um, on both the TCC and MTD boards, my goals will be to prioritize safety, efficiency, sustainability, equity, and access to all modes of transportation for every Santa Barbren regardless of their neighborhood or socioeconomic background. But I want to say that my first priority will always be, uh, realizing Vision Zero and ensuring that we have the public safety infrastructure we need so that everybody, regardless of where they are or how they travel, can do that safely. We have, uh, unfortunately, far too many reminders, uh, in the past and unfortunately, probably in the future, about the consequences if we don't take traffic safety seriously. Um, I'll just close by saying that, um, there's a lot of overlap between these boards. Um, on MTD specifically, uh, I appreciate the need to represent the city in that position, and so I've been committed to working with stakeholders uh, to make sure that our public transit system is responsive to our local needs here in Santa Barbara. Uh, thank you so much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Bauckey? All right, thank you very much for applying. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Then Jen Limberger. And this will be for the MTD Board.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Uh, my name is Jen Limberger, and I have had the pleasure of serving on the MTD Board for the last few years, most of those in the position of secretary. As a single-car household and frequent bus rider for the last twenty-plus years, having lived in Oak Park, Upper State, and the East Side, and having in effect arrived here via line two today, um, I am pleased to currently be a representative of ridership on the board. Um, additionally, my background in public health is a helpful perspective of viewing public transit as a necessary service to allow a, a community to reach its full potential. And with all this, I also recognize the need to balance the onus of fiscal responsibility and public benefit. There are important matters around finances and ridership upcoming for MTD, and moving forward, I hope to continue to be able to represent the city and its residents in these discussions and decisions.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions for Ms. Limberger? Thank you so much for serving and then coming back in. And that will wrap up this item of the interviews. Um, I would like to, uh, adjourn in memory of the person we celebrated life for on, uh, Saturday, which was Tony Pagetti. Tony represented the best of us in public service and in public safety, and was a great citizen, father, and great member of Santa Barbara's community. Uh, did a lot of work with the disabled, uh, taught disabled skiing, worked, worked with him a little bit on the Special Olympics. And Tony was everything you'd like to think is behind a uniform at any time for us. So, we'd like to adjourn in his honor.